Good morning and welcome to the November 27, 2018 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, you can ask Carol up here in the front. We'll start with routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from November 20, 2018.
Motion to approve.
A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $5,722,203.37.
The bills?
Second?
Second.
No comments? I would say we're starting to see those-
I'm sorry. I had asked Kim Adamson to come.
Good, because I was going to say, there are a few things on here. Thanks, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. As you've probably noted, a significant portion of the bills for today are associated with our bond payments. We're paying our semi-annual interest and annual principal payments on the six outstanding bond issues of the county. Those payments totaled about $4.8 million. $3,700,000 of that was principal, and the interest on those bonds was $1,094,571.
Do you want to just say what some of those bonds are? I think it's one of them is like the kitchen for the old jail.
Correct. There are total-
Just a couple ideas.
Yes. There are six issues outstanding. Three in the building fund and three in the debt redemption fund. Some are for the jail, what we called the new jail back in 2010. The correction center, the courthouse, the jail kitchen, and then, of course, our newest bond issue was last year for the new jail construction. That's underway right now. Our total outstanding debt after these payments are applied will be $59,195,000. Of that outstanding debt, the portion associated with the newest issue for the jail is $43,255,000. So about three-fourths of our outstanding debt will be related to the newest bond issue from last year.
Thanks, Kim, for coming up here. Commissioner Bender?
Kim, and then are we still on track to have a portion of that debt completely paid off?
We are. We are. There are two significant bond issues that are in the building fund. They pay off in 2020. That will reduce our debt service by about $2.8 million a year in the building fund, once those are paid off.
Good news. Good news. Thank you for that report. I have a motion, a second, to pay the bills. If there's no additional comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is consider a motion to approve the hire for Highway Department. Carrie Benz- Carrie, sorry.
Good morning. Carrie Dever. Commissioner for Human Resources. We have a request today to approve a hire of Hank Trumbull from our operations manager at the highway. You might notice that the request is only three steps above the hiring range. In this case, we're making the request because the individual has 29 years of related experience.
Are there any questions for Carrie on that hire?
Who approves?
A second.
No second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrie. Item number six is abatements. There are none. Item number seven is notice and request. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. DPNO number 66079 in the amount of $4,000. It was deferred from November 20th meeting. Good morning.
Good morning. Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Petition for compromise of lien, DPNO 66079, was deferred in order to confirm the actual closing date on a home purchase versus the October 5th closing date listed on the purchase agreement. I was able to speak with a mortgage loan officer representing the lienee in the transaction. However, he was only able to tell me that a firm closing date could not be set at this time due to a delay by the seller's representative in providing the settlement documents. Again, this is a lien which represents public defender and public advocate fees between March 2008 and March 2015 in the amount of $4,509. The petitioner has made payments totaling $509, leaving a lien balance of $4,000. He is wanting to buy this duplex in order to supplement his income to help him and his mother. He's requesting a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $1,000.
Questions from Melinda? I do not think the petitioner is here, so this was deferred from last week. For further information, comments? Commissioner Karski?
So it's not an indefinite delay. It's just delayed temporarily for some documents.
According to the loan representative.
It could be taken care of today or tomorrow or-
They can't even set a date until the documents arrive at the lender's office. And when I spoke with him on Friday, they had not arrived yet, so he couldn't specify how long it would be. I recommend that they just go ahead and advise us when there is a new purchase agreement with a current date and a current closing date, and have the petitioner come forward again at that time to the board, and maybe we would consider it at that point.
I didn't look. Refresh my memory. When was the last time he made a- he's been making payments?
This last month.
He's making payments every month.
Still, he hasn't stopped.
Answer questions?
Well, I mean, I think I would agree with the advice that Melinda gave them, that I think that we just defer this, and if at a time that there becomes an actual purchase agreement with a set closing date, that they could bring the issue back to us. But I would not be in favor of moving forward at this time.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Can we just- My motion to defer till a date uncertain. Can we do that?
Can we do it indefinitely? That's what I'm wondering, if we can defer indefinitely.
Well, I wonder if there was any conversations with the applicant.
His hands are tied until his loan representative advises him otherwise.
I understand. I guess, Madam Chair, I was just wondering if the applicant had any dispute or objection to delaying it any further.
No. He's still very interested in the property. Again, it's a nice property that he thinks will benefit both he and his mother, so he's going to wait on it until everything comes through. And he understands that this might have been delayed at this point with the board, but again, I advised him as well to come forward again when he has some final documents.
Well, Madam Chair, I suppose you could hold it in advance. I think a better practice would be to put it maybe three weeks down the line, but I think that you, you know, I think your option is probably okay. Because of the fact that the applicant recognized and wasn't requesting that the commission take action today.
Commissioner Benega?
I guess my question is, why can't we just defer this till the mortgage documents are presented, period? Which could be three weeks, it could be six weeks.
You mean until after the sale has gone through? And I don't think they can move forward with the lien on record. They have to clear the lien in order to make- to sell the prop- for him to purchase the property.
I guess my problem with this conversation is I want to help the gentleman. He's making payments, but in a way, we're financing his purchase of a duplex by reducing his lien from whatever the original balance is to $1,000 plus the payments he's made. I'd like to see those documents finalized before we make some final conclusion.
If I might, Madam Chair, I think what Commissioner Benega is referring to is not to defer it until after the closing, but just to defer it when there's a closing date certain, and all of the, you know, the enforceable contract is in place and executed. I think, if I might, I think that's what the commissioner was referencing.
I guess that's what I thought I was trying to make a motion to do, because if we, you know, if it's set up for December 5th, we could take action now. And I can fully understand that they can't finance this thing until this lien is cleared off. And I do appreciate them making payments.
Do you want to make a motion, Commissioner Barth?
Yes, I'll make a motion until- to defer until we get the documents showing the closing and the costs involved.
Closing date, until a closing date is set.
Yeah.
Right second.
I have a motion and a second. If there's no additional comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Please, Melinda. We have opportunity for public comment if there's anyone who'd like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda. We'll move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a brief presentation on the Children's Inn. Amy is not here. Oh, there she is!
Yes.
Behind the computer! It's like, she's not here! I'm hiding. Good morning!
Good morning. Amy Carter with Children's Inn. Let's see if I can get this. Thank you. Well, thanks for giving us the opportunity to present with you today. Just, I know all of you who are here are very familiar with Children's Inn, so I'll just highlight a little bit about our services and statistics, and then I have Sarah here who's going to share a little bit with us as well. So, as you know, Children's Inn is most known for being an emergency shelter to victims of abuse, domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault, and then also to children who have witnessed abuse in the home. And so, we are also a licensed group home to care for up to 12 children who have been abused or neglected, and therefore removed from the home due to that abuse or neglect. So currently, we are a 24-bedroom facility. We have 40 permanent beds. Of those beds, 28 are for women and their children, and the 12 are specified for our group home, so the 12 just for children who have been removed from their home. While in shelter, we really meet their basic needs. That's what shelter is about, is providing that basic need of shelter, safety, food, clothing, transportation, personal care items, childcare, whatever those women and children who are fleeing those abusive homes need, we are going to provide for them. And then another component of our shelter services is our case management. So case managers work really heavily and carefully with our women in shelter to provide the support and resources that they need in order to be safe and successful while in shelter, but then also be successful and hopefully independent in an effort to not return to those abusive situations when they depart shelter. So just a few basic statistics here, and these are just through October 31st of this year. We've had 842 intakes into shelter. Of those, 383 were women, and the remaining 459 were children. And this is an increase of about 4% over last year at this time. Our shelter days is a pretty telling number. It's really basically the number of times a person is in our bed. So 12,000, over 12,000 shelter days through October. So for example, if we have a woman and three children with us today in shelter, that's four shelter days. They stay another night now. We have eight shelter days, and it just accumulates over the course of the year. So that number is always going to be quite high. We're averaging 39 people a day at this time, and the average length of stay is about 14.3 days. Of course, that varies. We have women and children who stay two nights until they can get into another safe place, and others who might be there two or three months because they don't have any other safe options. But you average it out, it's 14 days. And then our capacity is currently 40 beds, and so that's what we use as our capacity number. And so far this year, we've been at or above our capacity about 50% of the time. Next, I just wanted to share where our clients are from. I thought this would be something you might be interested in. 82% of those who stay in our shelter are from the Minnehaha County area. 3% are from the outlying counties that we serve, and then 12% are going to be from other parts of South Dakota. Occasionally, there are victims who have to flee their communities because it's no longer safe in that area, or they intend to move to Sioux Falls, and maybe that doesn't work out. And so about 12% are coming from other parts of South Dakota. And then we do get about 3% of our shelter clients from states other than South Dakota. Since we're so close to the Minnesota-Iowa border, we do get victims who, again, are no longer safe in their own communities coming to our community. And then I thought you'd also find it interesting where the women who depart shelter, where they're actually going, and the slide is very small, I apologize for that, but I'll just highlight a few things. When you look at this, 64% of the women and their children in shelter are departing to a safe place, which of course is our goal, 64% that we know. So here, the red part there is 40%, and that is family and friends. So the majority of those, when they leave shelter, are going to stay with family and friends, and that is considered a safe option for them. 3% have their own residence that they move into. Transitional housing is 4%. 13% of those leaving our shelter move into another shelter. And what happens there is sometimes they are moving to another community, so they move into another domestic violence shelter. But also what can happen is that they maybe no longer have the emergency safety needs, so our shelter is not necessary, so one of the homeless shelters in Sioux Falls might be an option. And then unfortunately, 30%, which is the orange piece of the pie there, is unknown. We have a lot of women who, we don't get that information from them when they depart, or they leave and don't tell us where they're going, so we do have a percentage that is unknown. And then I would just share that 6% of those leaving with us, they do a survey when they leave. That's how we get this information if we aren't able to have that conversation. But 6% knowingly share with us that they're going back to their abusive partner. We aren't surprised by that number, because as we know with domestic violence, it's very common to leave and return to abusive situations. In fact, the statistic is it takes about seven to nine times to leave an abusive relationship for good, so we know that there are always going to be those women that go and return, and hopefully come back to us at some point for services if needed, though. In addition to shelter, I just wanted to highlight our crisis intervention services. I won't read through this, but you can just get a feel for the number of crisis calls we're answering. Over 2,100 people coming to our door for in-person crisis counseling, and again, this is through October. Follow-ups, that's always going to be a high number. Those are services related to an initial crisis. So for example, if somebody calls us at our crisis hotline today, we talk with them, and then tomorrow they call back for an additional resource, or maybe with another question. We would not consider that another crisis call. That would actually be a follow-up to their initial crisis. So that's the differentiation there. And then our outreach services. These include medical visits, so if a victim of a domestic violence is brought to the emergency room, we respond to that with an advocate. Our court advocacy, we're in court weekly, providing that advocacy to victims. And then also all of our counseling services, which are two therapists that we have on staff. And then the next slide shows, just, I wanted to mention a few of our other services. We have common sense parenting classes. We do rural advocacy, both in the rural Minnehaha County, as well as Lincoln Turner Union in McCook. And then our support groups. I just wanted to share, we have two new support groups. We've always had support groups for women victims, but we recently added specific groups for male survivors of domestic violence, and also the LGBT community abuse survivors. So we're really excited to be able to have those specialized groups for those individuals that really weren't able to benefit from our women's support groups. And then lastly, I'll mention our grants to encourage arrest. This is a grant partnership between the South Dakota Network Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault, and a partnership with Minnehaha County Sheriff, Lincoln County Sheriff, and the Sioux Falls Police Department, as well as Children's Inn. Through this grant, we have an advocate who provides follow-up and support to victims that law enforcement is working with. So there's that direct connection when law enforcement is made aware of a situation in a case, they refer that victim to us, and our advocate follows up with them and works with them in whatever way that they need. Some of those victims don't necessarily want that support or interaction at that time, but others, it becomes where we're providing more services for them. So it's a great grant in the sense that we can provide that advocacy for the victims while law enforcement can focus on holding that perpetrator accountable, but also supporting the victim. So with that, and that is how we first came to meet Sarah, who's going to come up here and talk with you a little bit, is through that Grants to Encourage Arrest. So she's going to just share a little bit about her experience as a survivor and with Children's Inn, so.
Hi, I'm Sarah, excuse me, Sarah Kinval. I am here from, oh, okay. Sorry, this will be like the shortest story I've told about how I got here. So Children's Inn has been amazing, amazing for me. I, just a little recap, I have been subject to emotional, psychological abuse in a particular relationship that led to physical abuse. It very quickly became possessive, obsessive, controlling. I got out. I was pregnant at the time. I did get out. We were going to maintain a cordial relationship, so I thought, I had agreed to meet with him just to talk as we were going to be cordial, I thought, again. And he attacked me, and it was brutal, and it involved punching and cutting and suffocation, and I ended up in the hospital. Again, I was six months pregnant then. He went straight to jail. And so while I was in the hospital, I was visited by multiple resources while I was at Sanford, and one of those was a social worker that recommended multiple resources outside, you know, in the community, and one was Children's Inn. And then the detective on my case suggested Children's Inn, and I gave permission to give my number to the advocate there. And she helped me in many ways. I met with her within a couple days after my hospital release. And the ladies have helped me, you know, they were present when I went to court to listen to the hearings. And then I immediately, the following week after my release of the hospital, I started counseling with them, and it's been life-changing. It truly has. The counseling services have just, you know, helped me know that I'm not to blame, and release of the shame. Though my situation may not be like everyone else's, I know that I have similar characteristics of other survivors in that holding blame and shame and guilt is all there, and feeling like I'm alone. But I know I'm not, and that's why I choose to speak out and try to help others, and I want to speak for Children's Inn to know, for you to know how important they are in our community, the connection with the police department and other services. I don't know where I'd be today if it weren't for Children's Inn. I did not need their shelter as he went to jail and is still there, and will be for a really long time. So baby's fine, just so you know. I just did a TV interview, and they asked that, too. But yeah. I don't know where I'd be without Children's Inn, and I will continue to work with and speak on their behalf or along their side, because I want to help them, let others know that there's help. There's absolutely help, and not to, that they're not alone. So I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Sarah. It takes a lot of bravery to come up in front of a group of people you don't know and share your story.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, and I think it's wonderful that you are supporting what Children's Inn has done for you, and being a voice for them.
Thank you. Thank you for doing what you do for them as well, so I appreciate it. I wouldn't be here if it weren't for all of you doing that. So thank you.
I didn't have anything else unless you had any questions or comments at this time?
Any questions? Commissioner Benega?
Amy, I just want to make sure I understood one of the comments you made about, excuse me, people were coming in and out of the program seven to nine times. Is that typical for a national kind of response?
Yes, that's actually a national statistic, that statistically, domestic abuse victims leave and return to relationships seven to nine times before they leave for good. So we don't, not every one of the people that we serve comes and goes that many times, but we certainly have seen that as well, yeah.
Do you know what your-
I don't know what our return, you know, go and return, I don't know what that percentage would be. It's higher than we would like, but I think that that's a whole nother story of those dynamics, and some of what Sarah talked about, the shame, and the low self-esteem, and the guilt, and growing up in homes where there's abuse. So I'm a big advocate for the sooner we can get children out of those homes, they're going to have so much more hope of not becoming victims themselves as adults. So the more we can do to educate young children about this situation, if they're living in those homes, and convince those parents that they need to be out of those situations, I think we'll hopefully see some progress in the future, but-
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
I really appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you.
Do you have much interaction with our immigrant or community where English isn't their first language? And, you know, is your outreach to those folks pretty successful?
Great question. We have made attempts over the years in many different ways to reach the different populations. For a while, we were working closely with Lutheran Social Services to do education to new immigrants to our community. We found that it was overwhelming for new immigrants, and so that, we are no longer doing that. We work with the agencies that work primarily with the different populations as far as giving information and trying to collaborate. We certainly see victims from the different communities. I think there are so many factors that come into play that are even more barriers than another victim, that the language barrier, obviously, that cultural differences. When they leave their abuser, they also are leaving their entire community, and that's such a support for them, so that's a really big move for someone to make. We do use interpreters as needed. We have our posters translated into five different languages that we do have around the city in an effort to reach the different languages and populations as well, but it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing issue for sure.
Commissioner Benega?
I'm sorry, I have one other question. In your slides, you showed that you were at about 39 units per day.
Yes.
And the capacity is 40?
Yep. This is the first time we've been, as an average, that we've been below. By the time the year ends, I'm guessing will be, our average will be more closer to that 40 to 42 per people, per day. For example, we've had a streak now where we're at 45 and 46 a day, so it just averaged out at this point to be 39 people per day. But yes, our capacity is 40, so.
So are there, unfortunately, plans for expansion?
You know, it is something that as an agency and as a board, or a board of directors, continue to discuss. There's no firm plans at this point, but it's ongoing discussion, most definitely.
Commissioner Karski?
First of all, thank both of you, especially Sarah, for putting a face on the work that you do. Today's Argus Leader, the USA Today section, 58% of all women that die every day come from the hands of a family member. It's like, and that's a global number.
Yes.
The number's like six an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. Frightening.
It is.
So thank you.
Yes. And I don't have the statistic in front of me, but if you look at the murders in South Dakota, over 50% every year are related to domestic violence in some way. So it teeters around that 50 to 60% every year, just for our state, but absolutely.
At least you've got to let people know they have a way to get out.
That's right. Yep. And take away the shame. You know, there's no shame in asking for help, and you're not to blame. That's a message we certainly want to get out to those victims. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy, for coming.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Item number 11, it's authorize the chairman to sign a professional services agreement between Minnehaha County and the Civil Design Inc. for replacement of structures 50-245-050 and 50-198-085. DJ, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. This is the first time that the full board will be seeing either of these two projects, and so I'll maybe give a little bit more detail on this one. We completed preliminary design for these two structures. We began that in August, and started each one of those as kind of shelf projects for design, not knowing really what we would be doing for construction year moving forward. They were kind of placeholders for the 2020 construction year, but with our 2019 construction program. It's looking more and more every day like we're going to want to move these forward to 2019. That will request an approval of the board when we go to advertise for those bids. But these two bridges are just four miles east of Baltic, and there's also one that's two miles south of Baltic. They're both built in 1930s, 24 feet long and 32 feet long respectively, both in pretty rough shape, and both have pretty low traffic volumes. They're both posted on township roads. These aren't meeting any kind of crazy traffic numbers where we're looking at volumes and using that as justification for replacement. Strictly because they're posted, they're in poor condition, and they're needed to be replaced in order to maintain continuity on our road network. And so the first one during preliminary design, the first one east of Baltic, it was decided to replace that with a two-barrel 10-by-6 box covert cast in place. And the second one, a two-barrel 9-by-7 cast-in-place box covert. So both of them will become box culverts. One of them, the length will be short enough that it will no longer be a structure. The other one will be long enough where it will continue to be a structure, so it will be on a four-year inspection plan. That being said, the final design agreement for both of these box culverts with Civil Design Inc. is in the amount of $66,595. We're hoping to wrap design up, I think, in- We're hoping to wrap design up, I think, in late January, early February, depending on how they are able to complete the design process itself through the holiday season and then, and then approaching the commission again around that timeframe to request advertising for 2019 construction project. So if you have any questions, I can stand by.
Questions?
Hey, I just have one question. When you put in a box culvert as opposed to building a new structure, does the construction part of it go much more quickly?
It will usually depend. There's several different bridges that we can construct, construction methods, and cast in place versus cast off-site and then, and then delivered to the site and placed. And that goes for bridges or box culverts. We can, we can cast box culverts off-site and set them in place. And so, these are cast in place, a box culvert. And so, they would be probably a little bit quicker than a cast-in-place bridge structure, but they're gonna take longer than a pre-cast brig, bridge structure or pre-cast box, box culvert.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
Appreciate your comment there, Cindy. DJ, if, if a bridge is 19 feet or greater, it becomes a county project, right?
If it's 20 feet or greater.
20 feet or greater. Okay, so what happens if you take a 20-foot bridge and put in a, a box culvert? Is it still a county project? Or do we then hand it over to the township and say lots of luck?
If you take a, let's just say, a 21-foot bridge and you replace it with a 19-foot box culvert, then it would be a township box culvert. And, and when we say 19 or 20 foot, we're talking about the, the length as you travel along that roadway.
Yeah.
Will the new ones last as long as the old ones?
More than likely, we'll say yes. We don't know. I mean, it's, we design these box culverts right now for a 75-year design life. We expect that there'll be more than that. But just with constructability, who knows? I mean, it could be 45 years. It could be 150 years. We just, we just don't know. The structures that were in place right now that were built in the, in the 1930s are approaching 80 to 85 years old and they were probably designed for something like a 50-year design life maximum.
We have approval.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. To approve, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you.
Next, we have item number 12, a briefing on the property insurance review. Craig, good morning, Craig.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The last comprehensive review of property insurance was conducted in 2015 here at the county and under the direction of Carol Muller, we conducted a further property insurance review this year just to make sure that the taxpayers are getting the most bang for their buck. And as we looked at different ways we could tweak the policy as far as deductible levels or other riders, it was identified that really only one change needed to be made. And with input from commissioners, it was determined that there would be an additional $1 million of business income and business interruption coverage that would be added to the policy to bring that total up to 2 million from the current 1 million in the 2018 year. This property insurance policy is for 2019. And then as far as our rates, our provider will remain travelers and we're getting a pretty competitive rate, particularly when we look at what the county had previously since 2015. And then certainly next year, we'll be looking at putting the policy out for bid so that there can be competition. This year, over 20 different carriers were looked at, including some specialty subcarriers. And just with the way that the current insurance environment is right now, the, many carriers declined to provide a bid. However, the carriers were also, that did provide a bid, were unwilling to lock the rate for multiple years. Certainly, that's desirable in the future. And if the county can maintain its current loss ratios, the carriers did express the possibility that we might be able to lock in a rate and therefore have more predictability in controlling costs, at least for a few years at a time. I would be happy to answer any other questions should they arise, though.
Are there any questions for Craig on insurance? Commissioner Bender?
I don't really have a question. I just wanna thank you. I mean, we had an opportunity to look at this in our building committee and you guys did a lot of work. Obviously, it was well worth it since you were able to drop our rate. And I would make a motion to approve.
We don't even have to approve. It's just, it's just a brief briefing, so thank you for that. Okay, thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Wondering if there's reports?
I would just say Commissioner Bender and I, this morning, had a breakfast with city people and some of the municipality people in the area and legislators. There was probably close to 30 people there this morning and we just reviewed the list of legislative action that we voted on earlier this year as far as what types of legislation we would like to see brought forward and also just some of our concerns. And I think it was good conversation and interest in what we were doing and a couple comments about, yeah, I'm interested in drafting a bill for that. So we'll see where it goes. I don't, I think we're, we're not done having these conversations by any stretch of the imagination. So it was a good meeting. And then I'll also let you know that I will be gone next week. I will be traveling with the state on an Annie Casey Foundation Conference in Florida for Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiatives as we continue to work on our statewide expansion and helping other counties deal with juveniles who are in trouble with law enforcement. And so I will not be here next week and Commissioner Bender will be in my place, so.
Madam Chair, just a question on the statewide, the county comment that came out. Really had a pretty limited list of priorities and I, do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, we changed some of the resolutions, but there was like only one major push, which was, anyway.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I had to get my brain wrapped around. And I did, I did point out to them that they had missed one that was voted on unanimously, which was the, the double taxation issue that we had talked about. And so I will be going to peer in mid-December and we will be having those discussions again about what the association will be supporting in the legislative session.
Great, thank you.
Item number 14 is, is there any new business? Item number 15 is old business. I would remind you that we have a city council, county commission meeting here, here in this building at 4 o'clock. So you don't go to the wrong building. I caught that last night. So here at 4 o'clock, please be here. And with that, I would look for a motion to recess the county commission meeting. We will be readjourning for an executive session. So is there a motion for recess?
It's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. As opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are recessed.